Yes. I think we'll get started, call the meeting to order and if anyone's recording, they could let us know. I assume WCTV is recording and I don't know if anyone else is.
I am Chloe from Wareham Week. I'm speaking audio recording for quotes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there someone else?
Yeah, Don Jepson.
Mm hmm. Okay. For those that have an agenda, we did have a continued public hearing for Borrego-Sola for, should be 150 Tyonet Road and 140 Tyonet Road, I believe. And I'd be looking for a motion to continue to December 14th.
So move.
Second discussion. Planning Board members, Richard.
Hi.
Russell.
Hi.
An aye from myself. Is there anyone else? We're missing Mike Baptiste and Mike King. Hopefully they'll sign on. Okay, that takes care of that. The next one is a public hearing for the proposed zoning articles for Fall Town Meeting specifically creating a new hospitality, recreation and entertainment district to allow certain large scale commercial development north of 49525. Do we have the, is there a proponent here to represent this or is it coming from the Recreation Redevelopment Authority or who's?
Mr. Chairman, Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator. Hi, George.
Hi, Derek.
So I just wanted to do a brief introduction. I didn't know about your timing of opening the public hearing or how your guy handled that.
That was basically all we had on the agenda this evening. So other than we thought we were going to wrap up Borrego tonight, but they asked for continuance. So this is.
Okay. So that way I can be home sooner. My wife may or may not be happy. So so Mr. Chairman, the members of the planning board. Thank you. I just wanted to briefly introduce some background to the zoning article that's known as the Hospitality Recreation and Entertainment District. You know, just for sort of a bit of a segue, I don't think that anyone isn't aware of the financial impacts that are happening to communities like ours through COVID-19. You know, it's when it comes down to it, you know, the, the stock market's doing well, but we're not made up of Wall Street jobs. So we're one of the, we're one of the community that our residents, our jobs and our revenues impacted through COVID-19. In fact, the governor has been talking about taking about 1.3 billion out of the $3.5 billion rainy day fund and that's just to level fund state aid for this year. We garner 25% of our revenue from, from state aid. So when you think about it, if they're using about 1.3 billion, you know, over, over a third of their rainy day fund just to keep us at level, that's, that's something that has me worried for the being able to continue the, the limited operations that we already can do for the residents of this community. And so I believe it's important for the town to be ready when there's certain opportunities to present itself. And that opportunity is to generate revenue for the community and jobs for our residents. And really that's why we thought that would be to bring forward to the residents of the community, the opportunity to present zoning so that we would be ready for something to come forward. So Mr. Chairman, then that's, that's basically the brief genesis of how this article came forward. And there's a lot more to it, but I think I'll, I'll keep it simple.
Okay. We do have a couple of letters that have come in just today. One was, let me see if I can get. One was from Atlantic Boat, John Cornish, offering his support for the project. I know it's here somewhere. And one was by Charles Rowley, speaking as a private citizens regarding the Hospitality Recreation and Entertainment District in which he stresses any proposal for the development should include reports of, of the nature suggested above, which is to strongly urges that any proposal recommend a specific requirement that cannot be waived that requires a hydraulic analysis of the groundwater supply, direction of flow, depth of groundwater and any and all protective measures required by a project of any nature to assure that the groundwater is protected against contamination. He has spelled out such in detail these requirements. And I think probably the water districts should have a hand in, in itemizing these things as well. As I said, the other, the other letter, let's see. Was from Atlantic Boat, writing to express strong report, support for the zoning change for the R130 district north of 25. This change would not permit any specific project. It would simply allow alternative development to be considered. More importantly, this proposal will prevent the development of large scale housing in this district, which is permissible under current zoning. I believe Wareham could create opportunity for our community to prosper economically. Sincerely, John Cornish, owner of Atlantic Boats, Inc. and Stonebridge Marina. I hope Charlie will forgive me for abbreviating his letter, but I think his comments are well taken. Let me see if I can get back to you. I guess just move my house. See if that works. There you are. So as I said, is there someone from, what is it, Nodos that is, cares to do a presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Tocchio. I'm an attorney up in Tingham. Been practicing real estate law for about 32 years, former Assistant Attorney General and Special Assistant Attorney General for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As I said, my specialty is real estate zoning permitting development. And we've been working with your planner for some time to develop the proposed zoning bylaw that you folks have. Good evening. In the opening, you had mentioned for consideration for the Fall Town Meeting. This has actually been designated for a special town meeting on a date to be determined, but that I don't, I just think that's just a procedural, you know, it's something that's going to play out as we go forward. The Hospitality Recreation and Entertainment District applies to land which would be north of Route 25 in what is now the portion of the R130 zone. And I believe, Mr. Svenssoni, are you able to put the exhibit up as a share screen for everybody?
I can. Will you give me a second?
Absolutely. And I'll keep speaking. So what I've asked, what I've asked Richard to do is put up so that you folks see the land that we're discussing this evening. And what we're looking to do is to put together some advanced zoning to allow for larger scale mixed use that would fit for some of the land sizes that you've got over north of Route 25, which is currently just zoned for the R130 zoning. The R130 zoning allows for single family housing development on lots that are three acres minimum. It's not necessarily an economically feasible zoning for the long run for a community. And as Wareham begins to look at its future, where it's going from here forward, particularly with respect to the COVID economic limitations, we believe that this is really good timing to be able to be in a position to present this to you folks, to be able to explain it and go through what some of the upsides potentially could be and also what some of the detriments are that exist under the current zoning. Richard has just put up the area that is the R130 zoning, which is north of Route 25. You also have down on, I'll say the bottom right corner, which is a little bit south of 25, which would be basically the southeast corner. There's a little bit of R130, which is south of Route 25. So that's not been included. What we've looked to do is basically get everything from Charge Pond Road east to the Plymouth Line. And then north, it's also bounded by the Plymouth Line as well. What we're looking to do here is go through, we use the format that you folks have already passed and had success with for the special permit in the Conference Recreational District, the Business Development Overlay District, in the Tremont Nail Factory Redevelopment Overlay District. What we did was we put it together so that your board, the planning board, would be the special permit granting authority. And it would present a mix of permitted uses which are not currently allowed in that zone. And what would happen is that we've laid it out so that you folks have a procedure, a permit procedure, which allow a proponent, whoops, you got that, which would allow a proponent to go forward.
Folks, 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 folks. Enough with the folks. It's condescending.
Okay, so I'll keep.
Yeah, I would just ask folks if you could keep yourselves muted on their comments. Like that seemed to be coming through. So if WCTV could maybe mute everybody except the board and Mr. Tocchio, that'd be helpful until it's time.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Derek. I was getting Charlie Rowley on the phone and I missed that.
So what we're looking at is proposal for a host of uses which would be available on parcels of a minimum of 100 acres in this area that we've identified. We've looked at, look, you know, having an FAR or floor area ratio limitation of 0.25 for the floor area for uses, which is a ratio based on what we've got for available land area. We've got height limitations that we've put in. We've got open space limitations which exist. And there are also impervious areas far as allowed lot coverage restrictions are in place as well. Generally, what would happen was items or uses such as hotel, restaurants, things of that nature, amusement, nonprofit recreation, entertainment uses would be allowed on this zone subject again to a special permit issued by the planning board. And what we've done is we've gone through, listed everything as far as allowed uses that would be permitted. We also have prohibited uses which have been listed. And then we go into some, some good limitations with respect to what would be imposed on the property as far as, you know, again, different height setbacks and things of that nature. As we go forward and put everything together, we pulled out review criteria, which is basically what we look at when we go through Massachusetts general laws and also what you folks have with respect to health, safety of public, comfort, noise, nuisance, traffic, things of that nature. So we've got a fairly robust special permit criteria which is put in. We've also added design guidelines, performance standards, which tend to have requirements with respect to unity of design, different design and construction features that would be presented to the planning board for the board's review and hopefully a comment and then approval as well. A lot of that was developed in conjunction with Ken Buckland, the town planner, who provided other information to us from your bylaws so that we could have some consistency with other elements of your zoning bylaw. In addition, we've got elements that have to do with landscaping, exterior elements, including lighting and the addition of a, you know, different elements with respect to having dark sky compliance where available and differing levels of details on the, on the zoning bylaws so that you folks have control on the process. One of the things that is important here is that we have an approach which has more of a master planning element to it where there's a requirement that any applicant actually come into your board for a pre-filing meeting and be able to sit down with staff, with any designated board members to be able to get comments from them and to adjust and, and you know, move some different elements around pre-filing as, as would be fitting for a property of, you know, over 100 acres. I note one of the good comments on the front that the chairman read first had to do with groundwater modeling. I will let you know that the Nodos group has been looking at properties within this proposed zone and groundwater modeling is, you know, it's absolutely appropriate, particularly with respect to which you've got there, the Agawam River, you've got different water bodies, et cetera. And you've also got some production wells on the south side of Route 25. So all of the elements that were touched on there are elements that of course would be considered as part of any, any development which would comply or qualify under these requirements. There is also a requirement that if MEPA Mass Environmental Policy Act filings are required, that the format be followed. You know, there are different details with respect to following those requirements as well. So it's, it's fairly comprehensive and all included within the zoning bylaw language. With that, I think that the big point that we saw when we looked at this, it is what we see in other communities has to do with the large scale, large, single family housing districts which wind up being problematic. We took a look at, for example, some different pro forma for, you know, different scenarios that have to do with how much single family, you know, individual homes would either, you know, have a net impact, positive or negative with respect to, you know, the fiscal health of the town. And in the bottom line that we're finding is that it winds up being a negative figure per a single family house on an average basis. Going through, I can discuss with more detail if you folks have any specific questions on that. But otherwise, if folks have any questions or comments that I could address at this point, I'd be happy to do that.
I'd like to ask you a few questions.
I'm sorry. Give me one second. Richard, can you pull down the the exhibit and is the board asking a question? I'm sorry.
No, one of the citizens is asking a question.
Would, would you hold that for just a minute until we get to any board questions that may be out there?
Certainly.
Thanks. Are you intending this as an overlay district or changing this portion of R130 to the hospitality in its entirety?
Excellent question. So it is proposed as an overlay district as is drafted. And we've got, you know, situations where obviously if there are existing overlays and there are some existing overlays in the 130 zone, 412C, you know, basically applies the more restrictive requirements if there's an overlap of items that are under the overlay bylaws. And then also, and it's a good point, the underlying zoning still, you know, basically remains in place, but subject to, subject to any additional requirements that are imposed by the overlay district. So with that, I believe, for example, that if, if this is proposed, do have to add a change. I believe it's to section or article 212 to add this, I believe is like 212.5. So there are, there are some cleanup items that are going to be required here and we can identify those with Mr. Buckland.
Well, I think one of the problems we've run into with our overlay districts is if things don't get executed, there can be conflicts with existing site developments.
Yeah.
So we may want to have some level of comfort in that, in protecting people from that. And I guess you answered one of my questions just by saying it's a, it's an overlay. Because where you have multiple property owners here, it would have a quite different end result with neighboring properties than the other. So I think we need to find some way to protect from that. I think you did in some of your setbacks.
Exactly. We've got, we've got a 300, you know, basically we have got significant setbacks. And again, with the 100 acre minimum size, that plus the lot coverage restrictions, if we lay it out and we've, we've run some different pro forma, it winds up being a rather comfortable, comfortable density with respect to just the placement of different structures on land of that size. And there's no maximum size either. So it's just the 100 minimum lot size. Our original draft was 200 and then Mr. Buckland, when he went through some of the, the recommendations, that was one of the changes that we made.
In your, in your citing requirements, you list north of 25 within the 130 zoning district and it says near a transit station. Well, no transit stations exist out there that I know of. So shouldn't that happen somewhere later on in the, as part of the site plan probably?
Yeah, that's, so what it does, it can, near a transit station, including bus station and or commuter bus facility. And the intent for that was to pick up, you folks have a, an existing very positive transportation corridor that comes from where the Dunkin' Donuts and the 7-Eleven is in through Glen Charlie Road. Where the Dunkin' Donuts is, is actually constitutes a GATRA, kind of a double bus station for a junction of two of the lines. And what we found recently, we actually went through Mass Works Grant Proposal and being able to cite development near the transportation routes actually provides a lot of, of points and positive aspects. Additionally, SERPED, in when we spoke to that group, we've got a lot of encouragement to, to be able to go in for the modern zoning, to be able to identify these transportation corridors. And you folks already have one. So that's, that's actually a, you know, a big plus step by calling it out. It allows this section of the bylaw to, to move and give us different opportunities with respect to, you know, potential funding sources as we go forward. So we saw that as a plus and not anything that detracts because the, the GATRA line goes right through, you know, the middle of this district that we identified. So we thought that that was, we thought that that was kind of an easy positive plus that applied to this entire zone.
I see no mention of direct access to Route 25 in the zoning. I know that's a goal and not easily attained, but there's been a lot of concern over the ability of Glen Charlie Road to handle this notoriety. I don't know if you've got any plans to address that.
Yeah, this, this is just the zoning bylaw. So this would apply, for example, to, you know, to 100 acre parcel north of Glen Charlie Road, which wouldn't be anywhere near Route 25. By getting the zoning bylaw in place, that sets up the ability for an applicant to come in to the planning board and then discuss all of those issues. So everything that we talk about on the design criteria, all of that would become part of an application that the planning board would look at at that point to go through, you know, for example, we take a look in, in one of the pieces when you go through all of the special permit criteria which applies so that the 1530 criteria all applies to your review of a specific proposal. And if you go in, you know, 1534.1B, you folks will require studies, impact statements, et cetera, having to do with the roads in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development, including an estimate of both peak and average daily counts, et cetera. So all of those questions would be specific to a proposal and then a filing that went before your board. But this for just tonight, it's, it's extremely narrow what we're asking. We're just asking the board to issue a, you know, support recommendation just on the zoning. And then in the future, if this actually passes at the special town meeting, then we would be in a position to actually put together a filing package for you folks. Or anybody else, you know, anybody else who had a, had a, you know, a project within this zone.
Oh, but what other board members?
Thanks, George. This is Richard. Hello, Mr. Tocchio. How are you?
Excellent. How are you?
So I'm great. Could you provide me some more detail and explanation around the dimensional requirements under number five around density? Where it talks to floor area ratio, which I understand that the second part, I, I'm sorry, I've read it many times and I don't get it. So I need you to educate me and I think other people as well.
Excellent. I will do that. So, so what Mr. Svensson's talking about is it says, "The number of multiple family dwelling units shall not exceed the number of dwellings that would be allowed for a conventional, single family residential development in the underlying zoning district on up to 10% of the total land area of the mixed use development." What, what is going on there is that right now you're allowed to put in residential units, one per three acres. So what we did was we put together basically a residential piece as part of a mixed use zoning, which is what we basically see now. But what that does is that imposes a density limitation on it. So what happens is, let's say, for example, that we've got a hundred, we use 100 acres and that's, you know, basically the lowest qualifying number. So what would happen is we would look at 10% of the available land, which would basically be 10 acres. Then we would apply the underlying zoning. 10 acres would allow for three dwelling units. And if these are to be multifamily and multifamily under your bylaws, what we looked at is the three to four unit for potential. We'd basically, you know, if you do the math, three times three is nine, three times four is 12. What that would result in is potentially up to nine to 12 units on, per 100 acres. So what it does is it allows for a mixed use, but it's got, you know, it's got a very So what it does is it allows for a mixed use, but it's got, you know, it's got a very, very tight density restriction on that. So that's how the numbers came out. If you folks, you know, have different density numbers, et cetera. You know, obviously, you know, we're all ears, but that seemed to be a density number that would be in line with other types of lower density projects that we've worked on. And where the entirety of the zone is already a residential district. We felt that that was a nice balance of a density restriction to be able to kind of offset some of the, the other mixed-use proposals.
Okay. Then let me take that a little, thank you. I do understand that now.
It is, I know. And it's, believe me, I, when we drafted it, we talked it through a few times. So the language probably needs to, you know, to be tighter. But in order to have to, you know, explain it like that, that's not easy for Lance.
So the article in its most recent changes has, the changes focus a lot on the residential aspect and the mixed use here. This is a, and I'm a little confused by this because it is hospitality, recreation, entertainment. But now we're, we're mixing residential back in, which it already is. It seems like that we're, we're, we're mixing two things together and I don't understand the context as to why we do that.
Yeah. So what we did on that is the latest changes, so if you go through, what we did was we reduced the land area from a minimum of 200 acres to 100 acres. We originally had the R60 zoning included in here, but that was, that was all kind of far away from, it was up north of 495 and it was really distant from, you know, any transportation lines. So we took that out. We added, well, let's see, we reduced the FAR from 0.5 to 0.25. And then we put in the residential density cap. And then, just give me one second. Oh, we added language that required that infrastructure be put in as part of early phases. So that the town could be ensured that there would be the infrastructure in place for additional phases. And then we added in the encouraged dark sky compliance as well. Those pieces that came in, came in as part of just looking at this overall more from the zoning map. What it meant for the town, what the underlying zoning was and not trying to make the zoning so narrow that it was just, you know, would be applicable only to, only to very, very few additional parcels. By putting in some of the residential piece, again, what that did was that, that had the plus from a Commonwealth kind of, you know, grant ability, if you will, going forward. And that also came up as part of, the town put together a Mass Works grant in order to attempt to get some sewer infrastructure in place in this area. And that has to do with some of the nitrification of the ponds that are over in the area. What we did was we identified that those types of zoning changes have the ability to attract Mass Works grant monies. And although Wareham was not awarded a grant this year. We think that being in the, the pipeline for that and being able to incorporate that into the zoning. What they do is when they grade these, there are certain point systems that you get. And by having some of that put in, that, that ticked off some of the boxes. So it wound up being a plus overall that's particularly applicable to this R130 zone, which everyone focuses on Glen Charlie Road. If you actually look at, you know, kind of where the Agawam River and White Island shores comes in, et cetera. There, there are a lot of, a lot of long-term issues that the town has the opportunity to address. If we're able to come in here in a comprehensive manner and also potentially attract some Commonwealth grant money as well.
The, the checking off the boxes, if you will, I understand that. Was that part of the motivation for the train, the transit station, bus station, commuter bus as well? Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, and it's already in place. That's the thing is that I, I don't know. I mean, when, when regional planners look at that GATRA line, you know, it may not be a heavily used infrastructure line these days, but that's got a lot of value to it, whether it's used now, whether it's going to be used in the future. Where we're going with, you know, modern zoning is that those types of transportation lines are very valued. So it's, it's something that we could embrace as part of the zoning. And I think, you know, whether, whether we make it part of, you know, a nice transportation link, whether someone else does, that's definitely part of Wareham's future for transportation.
Okay. Last question from me is about the wellhead protection area.
Yep.
And have you had an opportunity to read Mr. Rowley's letter?
No, but I, I heard it and I think I, I responded to that at the beginning. So what happens is much of this zone that we're talking about is already in the groundwater protection overlay district, which is Article 440 of your zoning bylaw. So under Article 412C, if there is more than one overlay, the more restrictive requirements apply. And what he's talking about, basically those are in place under the groundwater protection overlay district. So you could, you could re-add them in if you wanted to, but only about half of this R130 land is in the groundwater protection overlay district. So it's, it struck us as being more efficient to just let that, let that still control. It controls today and it'll control tomorrow. It won't be affected by this change because of the language in your Article 412C. But every, everything that he said is all, all within the requirements of, you know, modern planning. What we're talking about, we've read the entirety of those zoning requirements. And everything's consistent with respect to protection of groundwater.
Okay.
Good, excellent points.
Thank you though. All right. Russell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick ones, just trying to get a feel for it. I'm, I'm just concerned about some of the language and the height. 150 feet of height for certain commercial recreational facilities, conference facilities and, and the like.
Yep.
What, what density, we talked about, you know, how, how many residential units potentially will be there? What density could we potentially have 150-foot buildings in the zoning of, say, the 100 acres?
So, you know, basically I can't do the math. It's not so much because it's not necessarily the FAR. It's more the lot coverage. So when we actually take a, a look at everything that's here, I actually made a couple in notes. So excuse me for one second. Yeah. So the lot coverage is 15%. So what happens is not only is the footprint of a building obviously constitute the lot coverage, but other improvements, including, you know, the parking and things of that nature. Also, there's a 20% open space configuration that, that's applicable as well. So all of those begin to close in what you can do. On top of that, and I just, on top of that, there's a 300-foot setback on the sides from existing residential structures. So we've got that 300-foot, you know, structure setback all the way around whatever property you've got. So that's significant. What, what I noticed was we had 150 feet, had to be 300 in. And then it said 80 was 300 as well. So one of those, basically we have to go back in and take a look, but there was a typo in one of those two numbers. So we'll be cleaning that up. The thinking on the 150 is if somebody goes in and you basically lay out a hotel, which is, you know, basically the, the 150. What happens is being 100 acres minimum, that would be sighted towards, towards the middle of a parcel. The thinking is that that's not going to be something which is going to necessarily be above the sightlines. And that's, that's kind of what the, the thinking was there. If we go in, that's just something that's allowed up to, you know, up to, you know, up to a certain level, which would then be subject to the special permit. What we tried to do is we tried to provide a healthy envelope. And then somebody's got to, somebody's got to design something, propose it, figure out, you know, where it's going to go, how it's going to be financed, et cetera. And then have to go in before you folks under the special permit criteria. So I think just the way that we wanted to put it together, just because we put the numbers in here, doesn't mean that something like that, you know, it's not as of right by any means. So it's, it's going to be a situation where someone's going to come into you folks and you might say, give us, you know, give us, give us a rendering as to what that looks like. And we would actually, or somebody would actually go in, determine, you know, from a certain point, they do all the geometry and then there's a rendering of the building and you can tell whether you can see it, whether you can't see it, whether it's, you know, a blip on, on the horizon, you know, whatever it is. But you can put the, the requirement on them. I'll tell you that we just recently did that for a client who had a building built next to them. And it was a phenomenal view, et cetera. And we were told that it would be below a certain point. They actually went through, they did all of the math and we came up with a rendering. They then built it and we all, you know, we all said, oof, it, it looks exactly like the rendering. So that would be something that your board would say, you want this? It's up to us or some other developer to say, this is what it's going to look at. And then you folks go through the criteria, you know, is it injurious to the neighbors? Does it, you know, does it interrupt views and things like that? So that's, that's the number we came up with. So hopefully you folks think that that's, you know, something we can work with.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Excellent question.
Is there anything else from the board members? One, one more from me. Would it be reasonable to request that once an approval is granted under this district, that the underlying zoning disappear?
That's a great question. We've run into that in other places. We've had a situation where we did a, a mixed use over an industrial park. And that was one of the questions that came up. We wound up leaving it as just an overlay and not having the disappearing zone. I'd have to think about that because honestly, I don't think that there's a future for single-family three-acre homes here. Some other people might think differently, but just speaking for the people that I work with, we have no interest in that. Those are, those are quick hit, quick little profits for a builder. But they really leave the, they leave a town with a significant financial burden. So that's something you folks, you know, maybe that's something that gets added. But we'd certainly speak with Ken Buckland if, if you wanted to have him address us on that.
Yeah. And honestly, it's something I'd have to think about a little more too, to see if there's a downside or whether that works. It's kind of a different overlay than what we've been working with.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that it would be a problem just because the existing zoning is so, you know what I mean? It's just, it's just, it's not a good zoning for a developer or for Wareham. My gut tells me that, that we, that we wouldn't really have a problem with that. And I think that's probably the case for a lot of more, you know, more larger.
It may be unnecessary, but not having looked at the specific parcels, I, I can tell you if it was.
Excellent, excellent question.
And with that, I will open it up for public comment. Bear with us. This is probably the biggest hearing we've seen via Zoom or I've seen anyway. So.
If I, if I would, somebody had asked, tried to ask a question directly of me. Usually what I do is have questions go through the chair. Is that your procedure as well?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
And I don't, I didn't get a name of who spoke up.
Hi. Hi, my name's Holly Heratunian. I'm a citizen of Wareham. Hi. It's actually sort of silly to, I don't know how to ask this through him to go through you. But my question is, you mentioned that there's some sort of Commonwealth grant that to counteract the pollution from nitrogen in Glen Charlie Pond and White Island Pond?
Mr. Barry, absolutely. So what happened was the town actually moved on. There was a Mass Works grants that were advertised towards the end of the summer. And there was a proposal that was put together to put in some sewer infrastructure at Glen Charlie Road. That would be part of your, your sewer group has ongoing issues with long-term goals to be able to denitrify that area. And the application went in and it wasn't granted for this year. But that's like an example of the type of, of grant programs that are out there.
Okay. You were talking about the 100 acres on the map in regard, in regards to Glen Charlie and the White Island area. Can you, well, first of all, let me, is your proposal online for us citizens to look at? Because it's hard for us to vote on something if we don't, I feel like I don't have enough information. And i- is this online? Yes or no?
The context of this proposed bylaw is on the planning board website, I believe.
Okay. So I can read it and ask questions?
Yeah, it's about, it's about seven pages and it, yeah, it's, it's definitely there. If you go into the website, you can, you can download it.
Okay. But also respect, I'm a lover, whoever that is. I would respectfully ask the board to hold off on anything until onset water district takes a look at this and has their say in it. Two things. I just, Mr. Tochio, I'm, I'm from Hangum too. And would you want a slot parlor or horse racing in Hangum? I wouldn't. And I don't want to destroy this wonderful town of Wareham. I'm not sure, you're, you're trying to scare the board into, if we, God forbid, we allow single-family homes. And if we don't give in to your vague notions, we don't, if you give us a proposal, we could vote on it. But all of us, all we hear is slot parlor and horse racing. A slot parlor I don't care about. The horse racing breaks my heart. I don't want that. If you, I would vote this in tomorrow if you would say, and we'll outlaw, you know, we won't allow slot parlor and horse racing. I, I just feel those are the words, the big words that aren't being said here.
Okay. Thank you.
Would, would you allow, would you want those in Hangum? Because I, I have girlfriends in Hangum. I, nobody in Hangum would want horse racing or a slot parlor and stop forcing or trying to force it on us.
No, this is part of a process where you're not, you know, it's not being forced on anyone. It's subject to town meeting.
Forced. The, the whole thing with, we have to get this town meeting through. I know now that the meeting has been postponed until January, but originally it felt like it was forced on us. You know, December 12th, the Saturday before Christmas or close enough.
Meeting was moved up.
Too much information. And without a specific end game, what exactly are we voting on? Who's proposing this and why? I feel like we're dancing around that you guys want the slot parlor and the horse racing. And I'm sick of saying those words, like I'm sick of hearing folks. But anyway, that's my two cents. A lot of people in town feel the same way I do. By all means, put in a slot parlor. We'll be tacky Wareham with our tacky slot parlor, but please don't do the horse racing. We, we just got rid of greyhound racing. It's gross. We're Massachusetts. We're better than that. You know, leave that for Alabama and Kentucky.
Yeah, the zoning, so Mr. Chairman, the zoning bylaw is, it's on, it's online. You can take a look at it. There are no proposals right now. So it's just, it's there. It's, you know, it's basically drafted after your, your other types of overlay districts. It's got all your protections.
And then the underlying. Racing in Hangum. Would you, would you allow that?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask if we could move to somebody who's going to abide by your rules, like I hope to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I would like to speak.
Yeah. Would you identify yourself?
Of course. Yes. My name is Jared Chadwick of Glen Charlie Road. Of course. Yes, my name is Jared Chadwick of Glen Charlie Road. Um, I first would like to speak, uh, on behalf of the zoning change. Uh, I'm the president of the Wareham Tigers Athletic Association. I would like to express my support for the zoning change warrant article for the R130 zone district north of Route 25. As many of you know, uh, I live on Glen Charlie Road. This is literally backed up to my property. Originally, I was not in favor for this. But I have to tell you, this town needs to move forward. This town needs production. We can't go backwards. We need it. We support this zoning amendment as the Tigers and as myself, as an organization, because it creates an opportunity for the economic development that will help every person and institution in this town. As you recognize, this article does not approve any project or concept. It simply allows for economic development projects to be considered in the area. In addition, once any project is proposed, it would still require and state and municipal approvals. In addition, I think it's important to note that the current zoning for the notice group property allows for 90 single-family homes. While the notice group doesn't build housing, if we don't make sensible zoning available, we'll leave the owner of the property no choice but to continue the gravel pit or consider selling to another developer who could consider this option. I, 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 I really want to see this town progress in the right way. I've been part of the Tigers for five years now, and I've gone to almost every business in this town asking for support for the youth. And a lot of the town businesses, a majority are all corporate and they won't donate and they can't donate. And the small businesses, God love them, they can only donate so much. With something like this, it would bring in a huge amount of money to this town that would support the youth. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I could speak, sir. Uh, my name is Carrie McWilliams. Um, I'm a longtime resident of the town of Wareham. Um, I'm also a parent of a third generation child that's part of the Wareham Tigers program. Um, the Wareham Tigers would benefit greatly, um, from the program that the notice group, the notice group is, is bringing forward. Um, like any parent in this town, we want what's best for our children. Um, I know that many people in our program want to see this zoning change approved, um, so that we have the ability to decide what types of projects will help us realize these goals and help the program thrive. In fact, many of these same people are former Tigers themselves, as perhaps some of you who are on this call right now. However, the majority of the children in this program are grades one through eight. And whether our community can continue to meet their needs through, uh, throughout their youth, um, due to this pandemic, um, custom state and custom state aid really remains unseen um, and uncertain. Um, so it's really important that we have, um, other avenues to come in to help us bring the money in, to help develop, um, programs for the children in this town. The Wareham Tiger has been a part of this city since 1962. And so therefore, I strongly urge you to approve this measure to give the community the tools it needs to compete. But more importantly, to provide for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you hold on one minute, Charlie? Uh, we have one ahead of you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Robert Dillon. I'm a citizen of Wareham. Uh, during the presentation, the, uh, lawyer indicated there were at least two changes that need to be made or, um, fine tuned. Is it the intent to vote on the plan as it currently exists? Or to wait until the changes are, are made in the document?
If, if I may, um, so, Mr. Chairman, they're, they're basically like small typos. What we'd request is that if there could be a, a supporting vote. And then what happens is after this evening, there'll be further revisions, uh, to this. Um, and we'd, we'd propose to clean those up, um, after that. Because ultimately you folks don't vote to approve it. It's just a recommendation or, uh, you know, not a recommendation.
I, I would strongly recommend that the changes be made. And then, uh, the document posted for everyone to review, rather than revisions after the fact that have not been reviewed or approved. Thank you.
Any revisions that were made would have to be in the manner of typos or, corrections. Uh, anything substantive would probably have to take place in the form of, of an amendment. Uh, Madam Moderator can clarify this if she wishes to. But, uh, this is the document, this is the proposal as advertised. And anything substantive would have to take a different path.
Uh, can you define substantive, please?
Oh, if you wanted to change the area or change the allowed uses to a substantial degree, uh, increase the, uh, or decrease for that matter, the size, you know, some.
I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm confused. You, you indicate, you indicate a substantive degree, but I don't know what that means.
Basically, if it's something that
homework to finish.
Seemed that voting on something without proper notification, if it was something to that degree, then it would have to be done in the form of an amendment.
I, I would recommend that it be completed in its entirety, uh, posted for review and then voted upon. Thank you.
Uh, George, uh, point of order, um, are you planning on having a, a vote by the planning board tonight on supporting this or not? I don't think we're, there's a rush to do that, is there?
No, I would rather have a full board do that.
Yeah, me too. And I'd also like to have some time to see, um, any, any updates or edits that may happen to this article as a result of this public hearing. That's what this hearing is for, is to gather input and potentially make changes or tunes or tweaks or whatever to the article. So I want to set expectations that we will, we will not be having a voter recommendation tonight. Are you on board with that, George?
The unfortunate, uh, thing is, when you make, if you were to come up with a substantive change tonight, we could not have another hearing and come back to town meeting. So that's why it would have to be done in the form of an amendment. But at this particular juncture, I don't see a, a planning board vote this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson.
Mrs. Slaven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Uh, a couple of comments on section eight review criteria. It talks about impacts of, for the board, planning board doing review. I would like to have some type of documentation in there that it must have approval by Conservation Commission. They're the ones that would talk about the water resources and the impact on the water bodies and, uh, wetlands. So there has to be some approval by conservation. Um, I just don't see the planning board having that expertise that CONCON has. And there should be some type of note that if there must be a mitigation for any endangered species impacted by any project in this new zone. Okay, now I've got a couple others. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Under permitted usage, you talk about a multi-family dwelling. Is there any consideration for affordable housing within that component? Then under.
Would you get into that?
Yep, sure. So I can, um, I'll answer the, the first one. The, the first one, if whatever land that we have, um, I, I'm totally on board with your requirements. Um, it's all, it's all basically going to be the, the hundred-foot jurisdiction under, um, chapter, um, you know, 131. So that's all, um, that's all just encompassed just straight out on your, your pure jurisdiction. Um, so I think you guys are in good shape on that. Um, with respect to affordability, we do not have an affordability component. Um, so if, if you folks had, um, comments, requirements, you know, a certain way, um, you know, we'd certainly listen to that. But when we're talking about such, uh, low density, um, we didn't, we didn't feel that, um, going to that level was something that the town, um, would want. We weren't hearing that. So those are the first two questions.
Okay, and I have, let me, I think I have two more. Um, under permitted usage, you have, uh, 18 for waste, um, wastewater treatment facilities. But I'd like to see something added about, uh, treatment and discharge of stormwater under that permitted usage. So that there is some, we handle our stormwater, we treat it before it gets discharged into the ground. And then, yep.
So what I was gonna say is, on the, the wastewater, that, that just had to do with the areas, um, of this zone that weren't within the groundwater protection district. So that's why that was put in. The, um, I think the, the, you know, the stormwater, um, et cetera, would all get captured in your other areas on the, um, the criteria that the planning board has on, um, positive drainage, things of that nature. Um, but we can look at that in the next, you know, two weeks or whatnot, make sure that it's there, Sandy.
Thank you. And I just have two, one comment and one question. The question is, under permitted usage number 21, for dormitories and temporary housing in this zone, uh, is there a timeframe for what is temporary housing?
Uh, there is not. There is not.
Would this be housing limited only to employees? And what is it, a participant in onsite usage?
Yeah, that, that could basically be, uh, an employee, um, caretaker, uh, things of that nature. Um, we're finding on some of these recreational uses that that's a good catch-all. Um, so if that needs to be further defined, um, you know, we're, would certainly, um, you know, respond to any comments there.
Okay, and just to, Mr. Barrett, were there only two letters of, of, uh, um, comments on this particular zoning change? Only two letters?
If, if there's others in the planning department, then they haven't been forwarded to me that I know of.
All right, cause I, I thought I had sent one, but all right. I made one for Alan and I thought Alan had passed it on.
Mr. Barrett, Don Jepson?
Um, hold on a minute. Yeah, Charlie Rowley's up next.
Wait a minute, George, I need to go back to a comment and, uh, Jeff, Mr. Tachio. You, you're muted, Jeff. Can, uh, Sandy's comment about Conservation Commission review, I did not understand your, um, your answer to that as how she, how the conservation committees would be covered, if you will.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thanks for telling me I was muted. So, so what happens is, um, under the Massachusetts, just the Wetlands Protection Act, um, there's a 100-foot, uh, jurisdictional thing that goes around any, um, you know, any jurisdictional, uh, wetlands. So what happens is, everything that she mentioned, um, 100% has to be dealt with. But it, maybe this just has to do more with my looking specifically at some of the areas here, um, in some of the preliminary work that we've done. But there are very, um, at least for, for the land that I took a look at, um, there were very, very clear black and white jurisdictional, um, you know, requirements to pull you in under the Wetlands Protection Act. And then also, um, there were some mapped species areas as well. And, um, we actually had the opportunity to, to sit down and, and do a preliminary species review with natural heritage. So everything that she's saying is spot on 100%. And I can tell you that we'd have to address those, um, locally under, um, you know, with the CONCON. Also, um, there's the whole DEP, um, Natural Heritage Program. So there are multiple layers that have to be looked at. Additionally, we put in here that anything that would have MEPA triggers, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, would also have to be addressed upfront. So everything that she's talking about, um, we have pre-filing meetings. And then it's our anticipation that we would go through and discuss with the town and the various, uh, boards, what all of the jurisdictions, uh, would be that have to be covered. So everything that she's saying is spot on. I just, our intent was to put it in the other section. And I can, I can follow up with Ken so that he can show, um, her where everything, um, basically applies. If you take a look, for example, in three, it's got, um, administrative procedures for the application. And it's got pre-application conference with the planning department, submission by the applicant in review, um, by the board of a master plan, including all phases, pre-sub, pre-submission conferences. Um, topography, site, uh, features, location of all structures, roadways, sanitary facilities, stormwater management facilities, um, any traffic mitigation, et cetera. So it's got, um, it's got the pieces, including, it's got, um, brief narrative conforming to the format of the environmental notification form required under the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Um, if it would require in an environmental notification form, a draft copy of the environmental notification form shall be submitted. So we've actually front-loaded this with all of the precursors to what, um, her, her commission will be looking for. So we can, we can speak with her on these, but if, um, we go back through, I think we've handled everything very comprehensively.
Thank, I appreciate the color on that.
You're welcome. And I hope the answer isn't too long. I just want everyone to, it's, it's a, it's a long document, so I, I know exactly where to go and, and pull it out.
Long is good at this point, I think, so.
Okay, okay, good.
Included in the review criteria is impacts on water resources, including wetland streams, water bodies, groundwater and floodplains. So there is, even though conservation is not called out specifically, you're there.
Yeah, exactly. And you're talking to a former, uh, two-term conservation, uh, member myself and, um, yeah, we, there's no, um, no stone left unturned on something of this, um, this detail. It's just, it's incumbent, not only that we do it, but it's incumbent that all the work be done in advance so that all of the pieces all fit together and that you folks are given something that's comprehensive, that we have confidence that we'll be able to meet all of our regulatory hurdles, just because development of this size, it's just, it sizes tremendously expensive. And when you do it, you have, you just have to do it right. There are no shortcuts.
Uh, Charlie, you're up. Thank you for your patience.
That's okay. Uh, just a couple of questions and a comment, I may. Uh, where in this document does it say that it's an overlay district? I know it was mentioned earlier, you asked a question, George.
I asked the question because I couldn't find it either.
Well, there it is or it isn't, and if it's not, then it needs to be spelled out.
The original, believe it or not, the original, um, but overlay was in this document, but, um, Charlie will definitely, um, look to find that and make sure that that's in there. Good catch.
Well, isn't that a substantial change to the document?
It could be if it's not in there. But we've been talking about it as that, so we'll definitely do that. Thank you.
We can only talk about what's written. We can't talk about what maybe somebody's thinking. We can only
Right.
react to what we see.
Thank you.
If it's not in here as an overlay, then it becomes an allowed use under these specifications, does it not? Then doesn't it still maintain the other uses that are allowed over the entire area?
I would, I don't know if you have a, an answer, but I would think, um,
Oh, I know. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, I answered. It's intended to be an overlay district and that the underlying, um, would apply. Perhaps this, I don't think, maybe Charlie wasn't on the beginning of, um, my presentation.
No, I heard you say that it was, but it's not documented. It's not written.
Yeah, I know, I said that. I, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to argue with you. I just said that we'll take a look at it and if it needs to be, it needs to be supplemented, it will be. So I don't, I don't, I don't intend to argue with you. I just.
How will it be supplemented?
We'll go through with your planner and we'll go through the language as we talked about a few minutes ago, with respect to some of the items that I talked about catching and going through.
In other words, the language will have to be changed.
I would, that's what I said. I would, that's what I said.
Okay. The second question has to do with section number five. Here with me just a minute. I'm sorry, it's section two, citing requirements. It talks about the one hundred acres of land area north of Route twenty-five. Talks about the total land area included within the district. Irrespective of the number or configuration of parcels or ownership of such parcels, shall contain contiguous parcels or non-contiguous parcels if the land is separated by a road that does not separate parcels by more than two hundred feet. If I'm reading that correctly, and I can only go by what I read, that portion of the district, which is essentially the old Rhode Island district, that's land-coordinated into lots of twenty-five feet by one hundred, could actually be included in part of this hundred acres. So you could have spot lots everywhere that would be a part of this particular proposal, could you not?
Any land that's in the district, if it's aggregated and meets this criteria, could be included, subject to the other limitations.
So you could have an individual twenty-five-by-a-hundred-foot lot included in the hundred acres, and it could be separated from the rest of it by a two-hundred-foot distance, which is what the spacing is between the streets and Rhode Island.
Correct.
Is that a good thing?
Excuse me?
Is that a good thing? To have that.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking to develop any, well, if I'll answer, George, I'm not looking to develop anything in there, whether it's a good thing or not, that would be up to someone who's gonna have a proposal, individual lot owners, what's going to happen, what the proposal was, what might be proposals for denitrification, you know, groundwater, et cetera. Good speculation, but as an overlay, I think that, you know, it gives an opportunity for someone to take a look at it. Does it sound likely? No.
Well, this is not speculation, it's written into the document. And it seems to me that if there ought to be a reason why it's there, just saying that somebody might do it or might not do it is not a reason why it was put in the document. There's gotta be something more specific than that. Why was it put in in the first place?
I don't understand the question. I, I'm not looking at the twenty-five, one-hundred lots. Excuse me?
Why not just have a hundred acres of contiguous land, period? Go away with the separation and multiple ownerships and, and, okay, if it's separated by a road, no more than two hundred feet away.
Yeah, a lot of the holdings, even the large holdings, wind up being different pieces. So what it does is it allows it to come in on a master plan basis, instead of just a straight, single-deed basis. So that's why we put in the master plan preview on the front side. So what would happen was, if somebody is going to develop it, would go through, they come up with the survey plans, as you know, aggregate things as part of a master plan, and then bring everything into the planning board at the same time as a master planned aggregation of a hundred acres minimum. And then that's what would be identified as being subject to review. If, for whatever reason, whatever, you know, speculation you've got on these other lots or whatnot don't make sense, after, you know, what I said originally was, I'm not sure they make sense from a development point of view, which just seems like an extreme example, to make a point, which is well-taken, I understand it. But for all the reasons that it wouldn't make sense to necessarily aggregate all of these smaller, you know, item, item lots, it also likely wouldn't make sense for the planning board to include them as part of the application of the criteria for a master planned unit. So, good questions. It's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a good way of making a point, but it's pulling in an extreme that I don't think is economic. It's not likely, and I just don't think that that's something that would likely happen in the real world.
Well, I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
My last point has to do with the general comment with respect to the groundwater overlay district. All those are generalities in that particular description that's in the zoning bylaw now. What I wrote in my personal letter to the planning board for the record was very specific. And the reason I say that is that the groundwater that's in that entire district is our water supply, period. It's the only one that we have, and there's no reason why something of this magnitude could not include these specific requirements that do not get a waiver, do not get any zoning variances, their requirements for any development that goes here. Because either the Wareham Water District or the Onset Water District requires on this groundwater supply for its total supply of water, and without that, we're dead. So as far as I'm concerned, to say that it's already there is not being very honest about what the reasons are that we need to have these specific requirements. And I would, I would, for one, personally vote against this entire article if something like that is not put in there.
Okay, and I'll respond to that. I don't know where the context you used the word honest in. I haven't seen your letter, but I heard the chairman read it out loud at the beginning. And the pieces that I heard were consistent with what is existing in the underlying zoning. So to the extent that there are additional requirements, groundwater modeling, mounding analysis, et cetera, I expected that would be required as part of, you know, as part of permitting. And your point saying that, you know, groundwater, you know, preservation of groundwater, we agree with everything. And there's no way, particularly if something like, you know, a hundred acres is likely going to be MEPA-approved. Everything you're talking about, not, not, I don't blink my eye at anything, and we take, anyone would take it extremely seriously. So, you know, I, again, I haven't read your letter, but based on what I heard from George, I internally, I'm nodding my head, saying, not what, you know, I would be required to do in any responsible town with responsible board and citizens and, you know, it, nothing, nothing that was read out loud, you know, I disagree with. So I can just say that I don't have it in front of me. I'm staring at a Zoom picture of a whole bunch of people, and I can tell you that we went through, we looked at your groundwater overlay, which prohibits, you know, certain items, which we don't have a problem with. And, you know, I just, if, if you're looking to, you know, to wanna engage in this process, if it's, you know, the zoning bylaw is approved, we go in, we file, I would expect that you others would absolutely insist that all of our studies be spot-on, that we do all the work, and that we mitigate or prevent as is required. That's what I would expect. I don't think necessarily, or respectfully, that's a reason to, you know, say, don't pass a bylaw. It's a, it's a process, it's got requirements, and I think that they're robust requirements. And any responsible developer is, you know, hearing what you're saying. It's, it's, it's what we do, it's what we do if I represent a city or a town, which I do, or if I represent a private developer, this, you know, these are the ground rules. We all understand that we have to do it right.
I'll see that you get a copy of his letter.
Thank you very much.
George, I just wanna make it very plain that I'm engaging in this process right now. And this is the place for me to do it, while we're talking about zoning changes that affect the place in which I live, in which my family has grown up. And I am about to protect the groundwater supply that I think is the most important aspect of this whole thing. I could care less about what goes in there in terms of zoning. I am concerned about the water that's there and whether or not I have a safe water supply. So it doesn't matter to me whether somebody thinks they can talk about it when a particular project comes in. I don't care about that. I've been around too many planning board meetings, too many developers, where things have been promised and things have never come through. I want to see something that's specific, that cannot be varied, and is a part of this requirement for the magnitude of what's being talked about today. And again, I will not vote for something that doesn't include a specific requirement for groundwater protection, irrespective of what the groundwater district says.
And forgive me, Charlie, not give, reading the full content, the full letter and not doing it justice, but the planning board will take your letter very seriously, I assure you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, George.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone else?
Don Jepson?
Uh, Don, uh, Don is up.
Yep. I'm trying to speak for the average voter here in Wareham. And it seems to me that there seems to be a big smokescreen going on here. It's all about zoning, and we've seen zoning mistakes made in this town before, where all of a sudden we changed the zoning, relied on everybody's knowledge of it, and then we find out that Wendy's wasn't even in the area. I know this is a much bigger situation than that. But it doesn't seem to be very focused. We're talking about hospitality, we're talking about recreation, we're talking about entertainment, we're talking about racetracks for, for horses. What is it that they're trying to do? Because you're not gonna get the average citizen to vote for something until they know what it is they're voting for. Because this zoning is not something that everybody is familiar with. I live in R sixty zoning, and I hear this gentleman tell us that, oh, R one-thirty zoning is, is a real drain on the town. I'm, I want him to explain that one to me.
You want me to, Mr. Barrett, do you want me to do that for Mr. Jepson?
Just a couple of things. I think in previous presentations, the notice group has given examples of which they, of what they hope to achieve. That has nothing really to do with what's in front of us. This is to allow multiple uses in a specific zoning area, created zoning.
And according to Mr. Rowley, we might be drinking horse pee in the future, is that correct?
I think that's an exaggeration, but it's something we have to be aware of.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to know what it is that is going to be done. And I understand you can't do spot zoning, per se, but this thing is so far out that nobody understands it. And if I was gonna vote for it, I certainly wouldn't vote for it, because nobody knows what the hell is going on here.
Well, if you read the document, it'll give you examples of what is possible.
Okay, is Mr. Rowley's, are you going to make that document available to every individual in this town? Are you gonna make Mr. Rowley's letter available to people to read? Because otherwise, we're uninformed, because it's a lot more detailed than the average person is going to absorb.
The, this zoning article is on the website, and it'll also be in the published version of the warrant.
And you're gonna put Mr. Rowley's letter up, too?
We could put the comment letters in as well. If they're not already there.
I think it is, George, but I'll check it.
Yeah.
I would like an answer as to why R one-thirty zoning is a, is a drain on a town. It's, what that is, is every three acres you have a house, and that's gonna drain the town?
Large area zoning requires a lot of infrastructure, and your taxes per acre probably are overall less compared to your burden.
Excuse me, I live on a dirt road, I'm on a well, and so there's no infrastructure.
Right, Mr. Barrett, I could.
I do have the fire department, I do have police coverage, but we never see them, but that's fortunate.
I could probably respond to Mr. Jepson's question. These are all, you know, classic. If, if you've got somebody, what they do is they always anecdotally look at their situation. If they live on a dirt road, Mr. Jepson, I don't think is in the public school system, so you all aren't paying to educate him. What we've done is we asked Frank Mahady of XX, FXM Associates. He's a economic consultant analyst to take a look at that question, so that we could, you know, we could actually make that statement. We know it from, you know, other towns that we've done it work in, but he actually looked at Wareham. I don't know if he's on, Mr. Mahady, would you be? And could you, could you touch on that general question? And I think you're muted if you are.
Yeah, he is muted. There he is.
Would you like me to speak?
Please.
Yeah, we did an independent assessment of what the net fiscal benefit or cost of the town would be of as-of-right development on this parcel. So take the example of ninety single-family homes. We looked at what the, we, the average sale price of those homes might be. We looked at what it costs the town to provide municipal services on a per-household and a per-capita basis. We looked at what is generated, those revenues to the town, not only property taxes, but also license user fees, state aid. And we took a balance of what's coming in versus what's going out. And for those ninety single-family homes, at build-out, the net annual impact is a minus eight hundred thousand dollars to the town. And that's because of the number.
You're assuming you're gonna put roads in.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, sir. That's because, that's because of the number of school-aged children that examples that we've looked at in other areas, that kind of housing would generate. It's largely this, the, based on the number of school-aged kids.
Okay, but you're talking about building roads and building water supply and sewerage? Is that what you're factoring in?
Which would be required in a modern development.
We, we aren't even looking, that, we aren't even, we, that number that I gave you at full build-out doesn't even count town additional infrastructure costs beyond what the average cost per citizen is right now. Those are called marginal costs. And for example, you could stretch a police district to the point where you needed an additional police station or an additional police vehicle, or an additional fire vehicle, or additional water and sewer infrastructure. We didn't even, we didn't even consider that. We just looked on the basis of what it now costs per household and per person to do, to provide services on average in the town of Wareham, what that would be for ninety single-family homes.
But that's considerably less than somebody that's in a residential area, correct?
No, that's the residential. That is a ninety single-family home residential development.
And that's per year, that's an.
Year. That's the annual, that's the average annual impact, is roughly minus eight hundred thousand dollars. And, and our study has been provided to the notice group, and when they're ready, they'll release it, I assume. And you can question the analysis, the assumptions. We do this all the time, and, and we do it in completely independently. Our clients do not tell us what the answer is.
George, just for general information, this is Charlie again.
Yeah.
Under the planning board, when you go on the town website, it's under proposed town meeting zoning articles. Both of the letters, one from Atlantic Boats, one for myself, as well as the zoning article itself is listed there for anyone to see.
Very good, thank you, Charlie.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, what, what we've done is we've, we've put together to the best of our ability a broader overlay, which, you know, it's not spot zoning, so we, we try to encompass a district which is identifiable, which is a good spot in order to propose something, and then set the criteria, set the limitations, and then allow, you know, the planning board to actually come in, sit and assess it on special permit criteria, other, other boards, commissions, et cetera, as the required, you know, to basically go through, require that we do the studies and produce the information. When Mr. Mahady talks about eight hundred thousand, you know, per, per year, again, those are conservative numbers. We see that all the time, why communities are moving towards more of the mixed uses. And it, it just winds up being something that they've recognized, produces a more balanced tax revenue stream to the town. And what it does is it helps to balance out the town. With Wareham, with the new school, with young families, we heard from the Tigers, you've got entire generations coming up that are going to expect excellent services, police and fire. They're, you know, they're relied upon so much, you take a look now at COVID. But you folks are going to have certain requirements, and it's important to be able to fund them to the level that people are going to require. And that's, that's why towns are looking to engage in these types of zoning upgrades. What we're not talking about, because I What we're not talking about, because I don't know what ultimately a proposal would be, whether it's parcels that my clients are looking at or other ones. We've got full-time jobs. We've got full-time job equivalents. We've got construction jobs, potentially for restaurants, we've got meals taxes if there's other types of entertainment, hospitality. We've got hotel tax revenues, et cetera. But these are other diverse types of income streams that allow Wareham to be able to capture more revenues and not be in a position wherein they're in a net negative use of the land. Land that we're looking at is off of Route 25, and it's a, you know, very low-volume gravel pit. And Wareham has the opportunity to put that to use, put that to value as part of your ability to generate revenues. If this gets approved, and then it has, you know, it's got 90 days and it eventually be approved by the Attorney General's Office, we're talking some period of time down the road. It's not likely going to come fast enough for your revenue dip after the state does what they're going to do. Because, I mean, the rainy day fund's been hit. They're saying things aren't as bad. But again, it's only the beginning of December. So what's going to happen is you folks are going to be in a position where this type of thinking, these types of revenues are going to be very important as you go forward. The other piece of the equation is on the Commonwealth level, your corner of the Commonwealth is an area that has not really been given too much by ways of grant monies, et cetera, whether it's shovel-ready projects, et cetera. You folks are in a good position to attract that type of investment. With the bridges going in very soon, there are going to be, you know, a lot of different transportation considerations. And Wareham has the opportunity to get out in front of those issues in a way that we've done in other parts of the Commonwealth to, on the front side, address some of these issues. It's a really good opportunity for you folks. Mr. Buckland's been very helpful to us in drafting this document, making it fit with other overlays in Wareham, and that's, that was our intent. So there's nothing, nothing here that we drafted that, you know, would be specific to anything other than that ours 130 zone and being in a position where we captured all of the different criteria that you folks have already captured in the past. That's been our intent. And what we do is we put it together. Hopefully, the taxpayers in town approve this. But it's not a situation where every taxpayer says, I want to sit on a particular filing. You've got a planning professional. You've got you folks who have criteria and have different expertise to, to look at this, to ask for reports, to get comments from other experts. And that's, that's the process that, you know, is engaged in in 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. That was our intent here, to, to give you folks a robust zoning bylaw that had clear criteria and was broken out so that it didn't go afoul of spot zoning. And we could find that soft spot where it strikes a good balance, where we can present something to the town that you folks can review and hopefully be in a position to approve if we do our job and present something that will be a net positive effect to your town.
And on that note, I would just remind everyone that any proposal that comes forward would go through the public hearing process, and you would have another shot to comment on it.
Exactly.
I was just looking through my notes, and I, I see in your. You said exterior walls shall be, use a combination of architectural masonry area. Isn't that a little limited?
What section is that?
Section 10, under building, under building design, paragraph two.
Yeah, so, so the design on the front side, designed to create a visually pleasing, unifying and compatible image for the development as a whole, combination of architectural design elements employed to meet the standard, including building color, textures, materials, scale, height setbacks, cornice lines, so, you know, just elements such as door and size, window size, location. We also have stretch code requirements because Wareham is a stretch code community. So we've got an addition of a recognition of energy-saving, you know, basically modern elements that we have in towns that are progressive enough to adopt the stretch code. We've got the exterior walls, combination of architectural masonry materials. So a combination of materials, that's as open-ended as it gets to avoid.
It says combination of architectural masonry materials.
Right.
So the whole place is going to be masonry?
Well, it could be hardy board. It can be whatever, whatever you folks, I mean, masonry. If it's going to be a, if it's going to be structures that we think would be required to fill 100 minimum acres, we would expect that it would be long-term masonry-type construction, which is designed to last, you know, 100 years versus, you know, for example, some stick construction with clapboards, things of that nature. We're talking about, you know, potential investment here, which is a longer-term investment. It's more costly, but it's something that, you know, it's easier to maintain. It's got a longer useful life, and it's appropriate. And again, it's something that, you know, the board will actually take a look. Design features providing horizontal, vertical relief, including projections, building jogs, elements of transparency or window, architectural detailing, and changes in surface materials. That's, I mean, that's typically language that we use in our mixed-use developments. And that's typically broad enough, broad enough to give the board quite robust ability to review. We also have architects that are working on it. You're not going to see, you know, just a block building, you know, that, that wouldn't be worth the investment, frankly.
As long as you're aware of it, it just seems kind of limiting when there's other approved building materials out there. It seems.
George, if I could ask one question? And that, and that goes back to what I was saying before. What is it you're building with this materials that we don't know?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll answer that question. I'll answer that question for you. Nothing's proposed, so what we do is we put together these types of standards for something which is master-planned that allows for a planning board to review it. So for example, I've got another zoning change in a community that's north of Plymouth that, you know, ultimately, it's, I think that one winds up being, you know, a mix of, I think it was, I want to say that one might have a cinema in it, you know, which we don't know yet what it's going to be, but it's got the same, the same language. Because what it is, is it's envisioning something that allows a developer to come in and do something of like a lasting investment that would be worthy of, you know, actually having 100 acres minimum lot size. What happens is the, the investment in the balance of, you know, land acquisition price, infrastructure price, wastewater, all of the elements that people have talked about really put the development envelope into a different class. So if some places, you know, people might complain that something went in, but it's, you know, it might be clapboard. It might be something that's cheaply built. It might be, you know, different types of, you know, finished types of board that doesn't look good after three, four years. What we're talking about here is a level of investment in your town that would, you know, require masonry blocks, steel, glass, things of that nature. So it's, it's not something that's really typical that we've seen. But that's why allowing for the new zoning opens up the door for that type of investment. And it's that type of investment which is going to allow for, you know, jobs, construction jobs, the different types of revenue streams that come in. It's not something that, you know, someone comes in, you've got experience with people coming in and building malls that, you know, aren't doing so well and they don't look so great. That, you know, that isn't, that isn't the standard that I would anticipate here, given the investment requirements in land.
George, this is Richard. I want to go back to the comment you made, which I think is a very good one about the masonry thing. Jeff, as I read this, a developer could not put in four-unit condos with cedar shakes for siding. Is that how you read this?
Give me a second. It, it's not necessarily. It's, it's got different, different combinations of designs, building color, texture, material, scale, height setbacks. I would, I would expect that a board would have that within, within this language to be able to vary that based on, you know, the different types of structures, locations of the structures on the parcels, et cetera.
You comfortable with that, George?
Because keep in mind, this is. Anything within that zoning district has to be masonry.
Yeah, I think taking the word masonry out is, is a wise thing because you've got to remember, this is a zoning change. And Jeff, not, not just notice group, who could be developing, anyone could be developing in there. And I, I have to go along with George. That is restrictive. And just, I think it could be cleaned up, and we could avoid a lot of issues down the road.
Point, point well taken. We can, we can definitely work on that.
Yes, we still are in the public input area, and I think I saw, yeah, there she is.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Shayla Tavoras. I am the acting program director for the Wareham Boys and Girls Club. As leaders of this community, I'm sure you're familiar with our financial challenges over the years. This includes being acquired by the Great New Bedford Boys and Girls Club in 2007, then nearly closing in 2016. Though the organization was saved through the efforts of generous donors, our club still faces continuously challenge to upgrade its facilities at the former Hemen Elementary School and to provide for the families we serve. I realize that this zoning change would only allow new economic development projects in our community to be considered. However, I strongly support this proposal in light of the significant benefits it could potentially, potentially generate for those in most in need in this community.
Thank you.
Anyone, someone, someone asked a question if we were still in the public comment section, but the question disappeared. So yes, we are. And I did see a note that Alan Slavin's letter has been placed up on the website as well. Yes, Charlie?
One question. Do all of these guidelines and regulations pertain specifically to only hospitality, recreation, and entertainment-type developments?
I would say if they are taking advantage of the proposed overlay district, yes.
So they would have to be.
Correct.
So no other type of development would be taking advantage of these particular criteria?
I would think if they, that, that was the, the conflict I have with keeping the underlining zoning in a large parcel is if you're, especially if you had multiple owners, you could have zoning jumping back and forth from one side of the street to the other. I was trying to look at a way to prevent that.
We'll take out the section that deals with the 200-foot separation of roads. You do part of that. But this only pertains to hospitality, recreation, and entertainment developments. Nothing else.
Correct. I'm not reading it that way, George.
I'm looking at section five, and I'm looking at review criteria for number eight. I don't see any other kind of a use that's identified here.
I'm looking at section four, permitted uses, and there's, there's quite a few of them that are not hospitality, recreational, or entertainment.
So why are we picking out hospitality or creation, entertainment, then, if we can allow these other things in there?
I think that that's just the title of it, and no, nothing more, personally.
No, you're, you're saying here, we're going to overlay these uses onto a parcel that already has underlining uses. If there's duplicity there, then it's.
The first paragraph talks about mixed-use development that is related to hospitality, recreation, and entertainment. That's it. But you've got all these other listed, listed uses. But when you look at permitted uses, it only talks about specific mixtures of uses and square footages within a hospitality, recreation, and entertainment development. The use of the word development is different than district. I might be nitpicking, but isn't it our job to nitpick these things? Because how many times have we seen issues develop over language? And the interpretation of what a bylaw means? Look at section five, the very opening paragraph. Hospitality, recreation, and entertainment developments are subject to and shall conform to the following. Doesn't talk about anything else.
Can I ask a question?
I think this question's still on the table.
Yeah, if you could just hold a second.
Sure, it just has to pertain to what he's saying and what you guys are going over. I guess I'm a little confused. I'm new to Wareham. My name's Alicia Bro. We just moved into East Wareham. We love the area. I've been reading about this whole thing that's been going on, because I think this has been going on for a year or so now, that you guys have been trying to pass this, if I'm correct.
This is the first presentation we've received on this.
No, I mean, the whole projected plan of having some sort of entertainment area in that area. Why, why is everyone fighting to have something that's going to benefit everyone? Where you have, you know, you're saying this is only going to be hospitality, entertainment. What is wrong with having something come into Wareham that's going to benefit an entertainment portion? We don't have anything like that. All you're going to put over there is more housing and less for people to do.
And, and I say thank you. And to answer, answer that gentleman's question before, we'll go through and pick out those distinctions where, two things. He talked about the word development versus district, so we'll go in. I do appreciate that. We'll clean that up. And then now I understand a little further the question, whether you can overlay this on an already, already developed piece of land. And we'll clean that up because that's absolutely, that is not, that's not the intent. That's not how I believe that this would apply with the whole, the master planning, et cetera. But I do appreciate the, the comment on unintended consequences and language. So I, I do appreciate that. And I've got the notes, and we'll go through and we'll look to clean that up. Those were good comments.
And to answer the young lady's concern, that's kind of what we're looking for, is unintended consequences. Rather than just hand somebody the keys and say, run with it. We've run into that, the problems before, and we're trying to alleviate them.
Oh, I absolutely understand that. And like I said, I'm from Bourne. We just moved here a year ago. And I look at the things that the town of Bourne has passed and not passed, and they try to make that area so nice with things for people to do, but yet there, all they do is keep building housing. That's it. There's nothing for people to do in that town except live. Whereas this would generate businesses, jobs, things for people to do, rather than sitting in their homes or going shopping, where you have all these shopping closets where half the stores are now empty.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Exactly.
May I interject? Are we still on open forum here for public input, sir?
Yes, I can barely hear you, though.
You can barely hear me?
There you are. That's better.
How you doing? My name is Damon Solomon. I am a resident of Wareham. Been here for some time now, and address is Greenwood Ave. And I also represent, or partly represent, I should say, the Wareham Tigers. I also have vested interest in this town. I'm a whole 40 years young. I'm not an older individual, if you will. And I plan to spend the rest of my life here in this town. Um, and I plan to spend the rest of my life here in this town. And to segue off of what Ms. Bro had said, I, I, for, for people to, to nitpick, and I understand verbiage and, and, and words and so forth have to be, uh, scrutinized. However, the, the notion of, of one dishonesty from the notice group and, and then, uh, this obscure notion that they're supposed to be having some sort of secrecy, um, it, it, uh, obscured, uh, view as far as what's going to be approached to that area. I, I, I had to object to that. I've, I've seen documents. I've seen the trans, uh, transparency. Um, nothing's obscure from what I can see. Um, and also speaking as a resident with kids that are still in the town's program, I also have kids that partake in the school choice program here in, in Wareham. And being that is, as me right now, is I know the teachers also have struggles. I also know that we have issues in, you know, in terms of, uh, funding for our schools. We have all these hardships. We hear about looming layoffs and cutoffs and I, and I live that. I, I, I have a close relationship with the teachers. So I see it firsthand. So a lot of challenges we see financially, economically in this town, especially with the youth. And I can also, um, I might also reiterate this whole notion, and forgive me, Mr. Jepson, who spoke earlier. He said the average voter, I can assure you that, that person does not speak for myself. He doesn't speak for me. I'm a voter of Wareham as well, and, uh, my voice carries deep just as much as his. And, um, my voice also comes along with younger kids coming up with this organization, uh, excuse me, this on towns, uh, administration. Uh, my, our youngest right now is twelve, but they've been here since they were, they were babies. Um, we have a vested future, a vested, uh, interest in our future in terms of where we want to see Wareham when they're where I am today. And right now it is not looking good because we hear nothing but negative, uh, numbers. We hear about the, the budget cuts. We hear about the hardships that we're enduring. We hear about the, the people, uh, the Boys and Girls Club having their issues. We hear about, you know, Dr. Shaverhood saying, uh, you know, we have budget shortfall here and there. Why are we nitpicking on the one thing that could literally change this entire town's outlook on economic growth, financial growth, stability, uh, our kids, our youth? I mean, we gotta start at the bottom and build up. And a lot, a lot of people that have spoken here today have been in this town for generations and they have older, um, views and, and pardon me for that. But we also have the kids, the people that I care about the most is the kids. That's why I invested in the Wareham Tigers. That's why Mr. Chabak, uh, invested in the Wareham Tigers because that's where it starts. That's how we make change and change does take time. But if we don't take the initiative now and, and stop with, uh, the, the, the point in the finger is as if this is a bad thing for Wareham, um, we're going to be even worse when those people that are saying it bad here are gone tomorrow. So if we can somehow, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this with passion. I'm saying this with hope, um, that regardless who goes into that, that zoning, regardless who goes with us, a notice group or some other developer coming in, we need that to be a way to make money for this town, period. Thank you.
Well, I guess the concern and the, um, the aim of the planning board is to keep Wareham a town where you want to live. And how this project is executed will play a big role. You move to Wareham for a reason. We want those reasons to remain, to enjoy its coastline and its assets without being humbled by something that could very easily turn into something you don't want. So.
Yeah, definitely. And I appreciate, I appreciate them, uh, for you allowing me to speak and, and Mr. Toshio for your time as well. Um, and I just also want to say, um, as a, a person of a mixed race background, I do not find the term folks condescending.
And I, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it, that's our intent too, because no, no one at the level that, that we're potentially looking at here wants to do something wrong, wants to do something that's, that's negative. Um, the reason that Wareham is attractive is for all the reasons that, you know, Wareham's a great place and that's, that's a plus. Um, the coastline is a plus. Um, business is an onset, being so close, all a plus. Um, you know, these are, these are things that you folks have as assets that if this is able to go in and play out with the revenue generation, it's hopefully going to be one asset leveraging another one. That's the intent. That's the opportunity. And I do, I do appreciate, you know, the perspective from, Mrs. Solomon said he's forty years old. That, I mean, that's, that's the next ten years. That's the next twenty. That's the next thirty. Wareham has the opportunity not to stand still, but to begin to move forward. And opportunities like this only come up so many times. Um, the opportunity is now we're putting a lot of time in. And we hope that, um, we hope that this is something that's, you know, you understand our position. The, the reason that folks would want to invest in Wareham. And we hope that this goes forward and we can, we can work together. We would be very pleased to be in the position six months, seven months, eight months from now, um, with a, you know, some type of proposal where I could, I could actually share, um, you know, what the realm of possibility could be. Um, but this is, you know, if this is just, if we don't have the zoning, nobody can do anything other than build single family houses on three acre lots. Or continue gravel.
Address the last gentleman who asked a question.
Excuse me?
I said.
I can't tell who's speaking, so.
Oh, pardon me, Mr. Chairman. Holly Heratunian. I was asking if I may address the gentleman who just asked a question as well as the woman who just moved from Bourne to East Wareham.
Okay, very good.
Okay, um, what I wanted to say is, uh, first of all, to the gentleman who just asked the question, I love the idea of an entertainment complex. If we had like, you know, a roller skating rink or a hockey rink or things for people to do, I think that would be an awesome, awesome addition to the town. And I love that. Um, when you ask, why are people not all in for this? Uh, the basic reason is gambling and, uh, horse racing. Horse racing, we find cruel. Gambling can be a huge problem for somebody. I personally don't mind a slot parlor. But, uh, where many of us are quote nitpicking is we hate the thought of horse racing. And other than that, we would pass this, love to see it go through in a heartbeat. Especially a roller rink. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Excuse me, is it still open public forum? Hi, my name is Sherry Merchant. Um, I have lived in the town of Wareham for nineteen years now. Um, I have put three children through the school system. I have a grandson and I have an adopted, uh, through the system. And I just want to speak, um, regarding the zoning changes. Um, I feel like right now we're just basically looking to, to ask for the zoning change. Um, and I think that it allows Wareham to manage what's going to happen in Wareham's future. Um, I think, I know there's a lot of cuts in the state AIDS in the past, in the past year. Um, and there's a lot of uncertainty with the pandemic. I think Wareham needs the ability to consider projects that would benefit our community. Um, I think it would create, um, uh, quite a bit for tax relief, um, economic development opportunities. Um, and potentially I feel like if, if we don't at least consider this zoning, um, change, then we could be passing up, um, an opportunity that, and put us at a greater disadvantage that other communities would be ready to take advantage of. Um, and I just think it's important that, to keep the options open. Um, you know, for some of these upcoming opportunities, whatever they might be. Um, again, I know it's just a, a zoning change, um, but in, in public, in, in this public hearing, um, I just feel like if, um, any type of specific, specific, uh, project is right for this community, then we should try to consider it. Um, that, that's really all I have to say. I just, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity for the youth in this community. I also have, uh, an interest, um, obviously in the Wareham Tigers. I have two children that are in that program as well. Um, I've seen, um, a lot of decline in even the high school sports, um, on Friday nights. Um, and I just feel like being able to bring some of the, some of this youth, um, opportunities into the town of Wareham. Again, we're just looking to, you know, to revise the zoning, um, so that we can open up these opportunities for Wareham. And I would hate to see Wareham miss out on some of these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, I've, I've taken the notes. Um, so I've, I've got everything here that, um, I would need. And I know that you've expressed the, um, you know, obviously you don't have the full board this evening. Um, and continuing it to another evening is, um, is it appropriate to select a time that, um, we could continue this, uh, too?
There is a limitation on when even your, uh, minor changes could be made.
Ready?
Probably have to be prior to our next meeting. If Madam Moderator would like to comment on that. No, she would not. There, uh, Yes, I, I see.
Thank you, George.
Hold on a minute.
I also have a question.
I don't know. I don't know what the time constraints are on making your changes and getting your warrant article, but a public hearing would be helpful to add any amendments we might want to on town meeting floor, if that's possible. Is that your wish to, to keep the public hearing open?
Yes. Yes. And this, I mean, we, we usually do in towns as we go through the process where we, we speak to, um, planning board. We elicit comments from them, from the public, et cetera. And then it can be a situation, um, depending on, you know, what changes are made, how we want to handle it. We can always handle it with a, um, you know, ultimately it, it, they're minor. We can do an amendment. Um, you know, at town meeting, et cetera. There are different ways to look at it. What I propose to do is to see what the changes are. I hear the word, you know, district to development, et cetera. Um, I just see, uh, not tremendously, um, time consuming changes, but important changes. Um, what we'd like to do is we could speak to Moderator, um, Smith, follow up, and then also in the interim, speak with, uh, Town Council. And also your planning director to find out the best way that, um, we can get it done. Um, the dates, we're not right up against the date. Um, I believe that, um, we've discussed, uh, push of the special town meeting date, uh, which is all, of course, um, up to the town moderator's discretion. And, um, you know, we've, we've already, um, discussed different requirements that the town has with respect to pushing up your fall town meeting to, um, you, you need to get some financial considerations done to set the tax rate, uh, for the DOR. Um, so I believe that we don't necessarily have that pressing date on us. Uh, but I'd want to speak with Moderator Smith and also, um, Town Council Bowen.
Uh, yeah, okay. You can work the dates out. I, I have dates that I'm aware of, but.
What is your next, um, what is your next meeting date?
Uh, December, we were going to discuss that this evening, but our next scheduled date is December fourteenth.
Okay. Oh, good. Okay. So I, that sounds as though that's, that would be within our, um, our timeframes that we're discussing.
My question to the board this evening is if they would like to uh, consider next, uh, Monday, which is what the eighth, ninth?
Seventh. Seventh.
Would that be? I'm available on the, on the, uh, seventh, George. Are we putting this to a vote at that point? Or are we just having an open forum discussion?
I'm just having a discussion now amongst planning board members and.
No, I mean, next, next time we meet on this.
Our next scheduled meeting is December fourteenth. My question to the board is, would you consider meeting a week from tonight to to consider this, uh, bylaw, the zoning bylaw? I know we've.
As a, as a continued public hearing, George?
Yes.
Uh, somehow we've got to make sure that, um, Michael and Michael attend. Um, can we make, could we possibly execute a motion tonight that says we will, uh, continue the public hearing until next Monday, the seventh, contingent upon, uh, Michael Baptiste and Michael King, um, confirming they can attend?
Yeah, I would say contingent upon the full board being able to attend.
Yes.
Sent a text out that he was not going to be able to attend tonight, but I didn't see that until after the meeting started.
Yeah, I, he contacted me as well. So, um, let me make that motion and get this, this, uh, taken care of, that we will, I make the motion to continue the public hearing to the December seventh at six P M. To consider the, the hospitality zoning article contingent upon the full board being able to attend.
Uh, the only question, the only problem I have is you're notifying a public hearing. So I think we have to make the decision Monday night whether we're going to proceed or not.
You lost me there. We would vote, in other words, we would do a vote next Monday night. Is that?
Yeah, because you're, you're notifying a continuance of a public hearing and the people that are on board tonight would be looking for us Monday and we get, oh, there's only three of us. We're not, we're not here.
Yeah.
So I would just look for a motion to continue the public hearing to six P M, Monday, the seventh. A point of water, George? Who is that? This is Jim.
Hey, Jim.
How you doing? Um, are you continuing the hearing tonight? Are there other people who want to speak? I see. I know I have two that had their hands up. So could we do the continuance after? Yeah, we, I would just have a discussion if they want to, uh, the board's entertaining meeting on an off night. That's all. Yeah, it'd be nice trying to just, you know, to, to flow through the discussion of, of the overlay and then talk about the other stuff after. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm getting a little lost here. I thought you were gonna call it and move it to a night. Yeah, we took a little sidetrack, but we'll get back on board. Thank you. Okay, Kathy and Nancy, I think you are next.
Okay. Uh, Kathy Papalardo, precinct five. And I, my question, and I may not have understood this, but when you showed that land there at the very beginning of this, um, Mr. Swenson put it up, the brown area, are you talking an overlay for that entire area?
Yeah, oh, yes.
So from Charge Pond Road all the way over north to Plymouth and west to Plymouth?
And then bounded on the south by Route twenty-five.
But that entire area is what you're looking to overlay?
Yes.
So there's private homes in there now and there's numerous property owners. Are they all going to be notified that there's going to be an overlay on their private property?
Yeah, though it won't do anything, it won't do anything to change the underlying, um, zoning. So for example, um, half the people in that area have that groundwater protection overlay over their property. So it'd be very similar to that.
That just seems, how many acres is that, that you're going to put under this overlay?
You know, I don't know. We haven't calculated that.
That would be an interesting figure because your paperwork is talking about, you know, cutting out a hundred acres and basing all the numbers on that. But that's, that's a, my cat, sorry. That's a huge portion of the town to have this gigantic overlay put on and knowing that the town's sole water supply is up there. That is rather scary. I understand the financial aspects. I do understand that. And I understand what, um, the other gentleman spoke about with the tax revenue. I understand that. Houses don't bring the money in. I, I totally get that. Um, but my concern, the, the water supply is huge.
Mrs. Papalardo, I, we do too. And what I'm not, what I'm not doing is the, the science and the requirements on all of the submissions, we, we kind of went through it rather quickly. So if you go online, it's, it's seven pages, but it's got all of the standards. So water supply is really, that's, yeah, great. So it's, that's in, that's in there. And that would be, what we tried to do is we tried to put something together, which was broad. And then what it did was it, it then has restrictive, like the hundred acre minimum, et cetera. And then what it did was it it then has restrictive, like the hundred acre minimum, et cetera. But what it does is it, it winds up putting boxes around qualifying properties. And then ultimately, whatever comes through and is planned, master planned, it's then up to your planning board to go through it. So it's not a situation where just because somebody wants to do it or proposes to do it, then it happens. It it actually gets vetted. And I can tell you, for example, I already know a lot about the groundwater because we're aware of um, you know, the wells that are on the south side of uh Route twenty-five. Very well aware, we've got the leading um hydro geological firm, it's already looked at it, understands it. And they, people wouldn't go into that area if it wasn't something that the science is showing is all achievable and doable. It just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be worth a penny of anyone's time. So hopefully that answers some question.
It it does somewhat, uh because I also know up there that which helps to keep the water supply well, there's quite a bit of conservation land up there.
Yep.
Which helps, conservation land protects the water supply.
That's right.
So along those lines where it talks about um that, about open space and you're being energy conscious, um, your definition of open space is kind of odd that they're calling any portion of a lot devoted to lawn landscaping, terraces, patios, walks, athletic fields or surfaces, woodland or wetland is shall be considered open space. I don't, never heard of a definition of open space being patios, walkways and athletic fields. I have seen people try to use open space definition saying, yes, there's ten acres there, that's open space. And when you look at it, it's like, yeah, A of it, water, water is not open space. You can't walk, well, some people can walk on it, but I can't walk on it. So I think, you know, the, your definition of open space does not make sense to me at all. If it's, has any kind of building on it, um landscaping, terraces, patios, walks, athletic fields or surfaces, I don't, I don't agree with that definition of open space at all. And I think that needs to be changed because your definition being twenty percent, you've just thrown all those things in there and defined that as open space. I would not call that open space. I think you'd need to revisit that because that does not sell you being um conservation minded at all. So, thank you, and now turning it over to Nancy.
Thank you.
I appreciate um, I appreciate the the detail, the level of detail that's already in the document. But more than that, I I applaud the planning board for being very picky about this. We've had so many um zoning articles that have gone down in flames because they weren't well understood or because there was one thing that then came up at town meeting. So I think if we get this right, it's like making sausage. Nobody wants to see the process, but but it's gotta be done and it's gotta be done right, okay? Um, again, I have a question about the density and the multi um multi-unit housing. If I understood you correctly, if it was a hundred acres, you could do nine to twelve units on ten of the acres, then.
Nine to ten on all, all of the acres.
Okay, so nine to ten total units within those hundred acres?
Yes.
Okay, then.
Nine to tw- nine to twelve, sorry Nancy.
Nine to twelve, okay. And then twenty percent, which is twenty acres, would be committed to open space. And then that leaves the other seventy acres for any of the approved or allowed uses within the zone.
You can't break it up like that. I appreciate trying to break it up, but what happens is the the ten acres, tha- that's like a, that's a limitation. That's a um, it's it's kind of a multiplier that goes into or def- it it goes into determining the number of units. It doesn't necessarily mean that only ten acres is used for that. Do you see what I mean? They could, things could be mixed, so things could be aggregated closer together, et cetera. It's not like ten acres is dedicated to anything itself.
Um, so.
It's an equi- it's an equa- it's an equation is what it is. It winds up being a density equation. And I know you're trying to, you're trying to put blocks and do the math as to where development is, et cetera. I'm just telling you before you get too deep into it, it's not, it doesn't apply that way.
So, so then these nine to twelve units could be on the top level of the hotel and they would be condos or some such thing.
Whatever a develop, I don't, I don't know what somebody would do. Um, but if, but if somebody had said before, if it's not, if it's not limited in the document, it winds up being part of a master plan proposal. And then your planning board, you know, goes through and make, you know, tries to makes, does that make sense? Does it not make sense, et cetera? Um, do you know what I mean? So it's not, it's not anything that that my folks are proposing or whatnot. It's just, this is the zoning code and it's broad and it allows for folks to, you know, make different proposals that make economic sense, you know, given whatever the big picture is.
Um, well, we're just trying to, I'm personally, I'm just trying to make sense of this. Um, we've had duplexes that have been connected by a three hundred foot fence, so um, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, okay, so, so this is, you know, been there, done that.
Somebody's, if, if somebody's paying for what land's gonna go for here and doing that, I mean, that that's, you know, that's, that's maybe kind of um, you know, sins of either existing developers or the past or whatnot. Um, what we're talking about here is trying to change the zoning so that you don't have to do sneaky little things like that that kinda contravene what does, that's what developers do if the zoning is really tight. Like, some people will build what's allowed under zoning, other people will try to do sneaky things like that. Um, what we're trying to do is to put together a comprehensive zoning that we, it's similar to what we do in other towns, that it allows for the master planning. So somebody comes in at first and says, this is what I want to do and these are the pieces. Everything may not be built all, you know, at once, but what happens is the planning board sees, sees the big picture and says, all right, we we want this for, you know, utilities, we want this for roadway. Um, fire department, are these roads wide enough? Um, do we have enough turnarounds, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But what happens is it gives the incentive for somebody to come in and put the cards on the table, be comprehensive in the planning, so that if there's something that the planning board thinks about that the the planner, you know, that the developer doesn't, it's something that is gonna be required as part of the plan. So it's, in my view, it's the opposite of of that, that kinda weird stuff you're talking about. I've got some stories of things people have done. Um, and it's, you know, that, that's because they're trying to get around something as opposed to just trying to address it like we are. So hopefully, hopefully we've, we've caught enough of, you know, with foresight. That's why the comments tonight, your comments as well, are helpful to us because we're just trying to give your planning board the tools to assess something that's comprehensive and that achieves your goals in town. Not, you know, maybe not yesterday's goals, maybe not today's goals, but certainly going forward. Um, we're hoping that the comprehensive nature of this is something that everyone can get their, their hands around. And it goes to Kathy's question about the water. If you've got someone just coming in and doing single-family houses, popping in individual um septic systems, you know, things like that, nobody looks at everything in a comprehensive manner. Something like this, you do water mounding analysis. You, you know, you know what you've got for groundwater loading and and you either can solve it or you can't. And if you can't, you're looking for sewer, you know, you, that's, that's what's happening here. And the scale of the investment is such that they either get it done or they don't, and then they have to go in another direction. But hopefully, the scale of the comprehensive plan justifies all of that planning and infrastructure. And that's, that's kind of the way that we've been doing it in other towns. You folks, Wareham hasn't been there yet, especially in these residential zones. This is a good opportunity to use land that's near twenty-five, you know, near the the Gatra line and actually, you know, do something different than residential or or the gravel pit.
Okay, um, I do have a few more questions. Uh, one of them is about the permitted uses. I'm not sure how hospital or medical-related facilities um falls under the category of hospitality, recreation and entertainment.
Yep, so excellent question, and somebody brought that up earlier. Um, that's just the title of this. I mean, we could call it, you know, the, the multiple multi-use district if you want. Um, but what happens is, um, what we looked at is we looked at these, these uses that are out there in modern mixed-use scenarios. So it might be a situation where something comes in and then you've got an opportunity to put in, you know, Minute Clinic or, you know, or surgical, we, we, I did a surgical center recently. Um, these are, these are job generators. They're uses that um people need. Um, you know, I, I, over and above, you know, just the jobs, um, being closer to different services like that, which are, which are clean, which are modern, which are related to healthcare, et cetera. Um, to be able to put these into a zone which would be advantageous, given the location, given the other types of uses, there's no reason to go through and, you know, start crossing things like that out. I think um if you folks had a medical use, I think that would be a, I think that would be a a plus.
For an example, look at uh Wareham Crossing. You have an urgent care center in there. There's, there's an example of if, if hospital or medical use wasn't allowed, that urgent care couldn't be there.
No, I d- I don't disagree that it would be a benefit to that area because, because there's not something up there. I'm arguing that the use of hospitality, recreation and entertainment district is disingenuous. Okay, that's all.
Yeah, I, we, we developed that with your planner and that was, you know, it's not, I, I think what happens is people just go to the code and it's right there, permitted uses, bang, 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 bang. Um, that's the way that zoning articles, especially in overlays, are drafted. Um, we can't put everything in hospitality or creation, entertainment, zoning, you know what I mean? It's just, it's just not, it's not feasible.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, but veterinary hospitals is a stretch.
Why? Veterinary hospitals are like fant- oh my god, I, I've got, I've got stories on veterinary hospitals. Um, I've done quite a few there. Um, they're pretty, they're pretty interesting. They're in huge demand nowadays too, to tell you the truth, huge demand.
Um, in this, all of the permitted uses, um, would a, a solar project be allowed?
Uh, I thought so. Um, and I apologize, it's getting late. Um.
Um, no, I understand that. I couldn't find it. And I don't find any information about whether or not solar on, rooftop solar would be um advantageous, recommended, required.
Yeah, I think usual, that's a really good question. Um, what will happen if, on, usually on a hundred acres, you're usually gonna go through MIPA process, which has an entire greenhouse gas review, energy review. So the reality, and we hit that in the MIPA, um, is that all of that gets captured under that state permitting process. Um, it, we, you know, we, we do it. It's, it's um, it's real complex, it's real specific. Um, and there are pluses to it, there are the negatives to it. It's, it's um, it goes both ways because, for example, um, solar on roofs, you have to have all those penetrations. And they're finding that um, they're finding that those don't age well. Um, so there are different solutions, but that would be part of the MIPA process that I would see um shaking out on rooftops and things of that nature. Good que- good question.
But would a large-scale seventy-acre solar project be allowed?
Again, I'll, I'll take a look. I don't um, this time of night, I don't have an impression. Typically, something like that is a very passive use of the land, um, which returns a little bit, but not a whole lot of jobs and and things of that nature. Some people like them, um, other people don't have a great experience with them.
Um, it's, it's just a matter of, we've had a few major issues with some in town, so. So let's, you know, if we're to generate jobs and have some sort of quality um development in that area.
Yeah, I, and I, I'll take a look at it after. I don't have a recollection. Um, uh, but I will tell you, yeah, it's, it can be a panacea for some um communities and other communities, they consider it to be just kind of a, a bank, a long-term banking of land. It kinda puts it into more of a minimal production. Um, I don't believe so. Well, well, it's in there. I'll probably know in the morning, the minute I wake up.
Mr. Tocchio, this is Richard Swenson. Um, one of the things in here that I, I like and I dislike at the same time is in number four and permitted uses, after the, all the list of the uses in paragraph C, it gives the planning board pretty wide discretion on uh what could go in there, um, as long as it doesn't create health, traffic or safety problems. So I felt that the flexibility was there um to one, allow undocumented uses in there, such as a solar farm. I also felt it gave the planning board discretion to say, no, uh, those causes too many concerns and we don't want them in there. So I, I was, I'm pleased with it from the point of view that there's a, a control, if you will, i.e. the planning board there. And it's not so restrictive that we need to go do zoning changes for unique projects that come up.
It also accessory uses are permitted as well. And um, I, I think she just, you know, Nancy touched on, you know, what, on a building, next to a building, et cetera. So, you know, depending on whatever um was proposed, there'd be also some um, some interpretive leeway there as well. So I think that's a plus. And some people like them, some people don't. Um, you know, and it's, it's, it's up to what you folks, you know, what you folks think about it. I just, I think the goal here, um, in at least the way that this is drafted, is more of an active, um, active type of uh use. Again, jobs, salaries, um, activity, um, things of that nature. That's, that's the intent. That's, that's the opportunity that Wareham presents.
George, could I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm looking at number five, under density. Uh, where it says the maximum allowed floor area ratio for non-residential uses shall be point two five. That's not a ratio, that's a decimal, so what does that mean? Does it mean that twenty-five acres out of a hundred can be non-residential uses?
Uh, Mr. Tocchio is going back on me here.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I actually just poured some um, poured some water. No, the, the point, point two five winds up being um, you know, commercial uh floor area ratio. So it's a, it's a ratio of floor area to um overall uh lot area.
Floor area to overall lot area?
Yes.
Then that's what it should say. And just one other general comment, George.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with all due respect to everybody that's, that's uh spoken tonight, I hope that we all remember that we're looking at this zoning bylaw for the entire area above Route twenty-five. And the question was asked, how many acres does this represent? Um, I'm going back by memory. Uh, the town of Wareham, I believe, is thirty-nine plus uh square miles. Uh, looking back to the plan that Richard had put up on the screen, it was something less than a quarter of that perhaps. So you're looking at maybe seven to eight square miles of area. It would be under this zoning district. It's just something to consider that it is a large area. The second thing is that it should be looked at from zoning for the entire area, not one specific project. And the zoning that you approve. And the zoning that you approve should not be tailored to one specific project.
Agreed.
Is to remember is that this zoning applies to a land area with a minimum size of 100 acres. So if it's tailored specifically to hospitality and recreation and so forth, how many other developers would come into an area such as this, once this gets developed, pick up another 100 acres and do the same thing? Is it the type of thing that will ultimately benefit the town as a whole to have the minimum size 100 acres? Or should the zoning be tailored in such a way that when a developer comes in with a specific project and he's got 100 acres, we could apply this criteria to it? But not necessarily put a limitation on the acreage. What that does is perhaps restrict other people from coming in and doing something similar. So I wonder if it's appropriate for the town as a whole to restrict the developable area to something that's as large, rather than to cut it back to something that's more reasonable that would, it might more than one developer come in and do the same thing. So I understand that there's been a lot of talk and, and question about this, but this is the first public forum under a public hearing process where people have been able to say anything. And I understand the young people's concerns about having something that's a little bit more than Wareham has right now. But I also appreciate the quality that needs to go into zoning in order to make it work. So I leave that with just a thought for the night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a question.
Yes?
Hi, Chairman Barrett. If I understand this correctly, the ideal project would be a large enough project that it would meet the criteria for direct access to Route 25 with a dedicated interchange.
Who's speaking, please?
Would you just identify?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Diane Kenny.
Okay. I don't know what the prerequisite is for a state highway ramp. I don't know if, if you could help us with that.
Oh, no. So, so there's no, there's no requirement, there's no requirement. What happens is it's got the criteria for, you know, taking a look, whatever, whatever proposals come in, there are the requirements on the criteria around the traffic, but. I'm so sorry, Mr. Barrett. I'm just trying to answer the question. I, I just can't, I can only, you know, kind of answer questions about the document and what's happening. I just, I'll listen to the question, but I don't think I can provide an answer.
Okay. There is, there is no specific criteria to, to.
I understand that in the proposal, there is no specific criteria. My question to you is, does the planning board think that having no specific criteria, when actually earlier we heard there was clear criteria for the interchange, as we all know, Glen Charlie Road, in my opinion, and I, I am not a professional in traffic, but I do live in the area and Glen Charlie Road is already a nightmare. So if there isn't a specific criteria for the interchange, then why would anybody ever vote for this? And if, if, if the plan is, and that's what we've been hearing for the last year, is that there is a plan for the interchange, where would that interchange be? Because a, a lot of people in town talk about, well, there's going to be an interchange. It'll dead end to whatever the project may be. A slots piler and a horse track or another project. Yet nobody's ever said where that interchange would be. And if there isn't specific criteria, then we're talking about traffic coming up Glen Charlie, which is not sustainable. So I don't even understand how we could even consider voting for this huge eight, eight, a quarter of the town zoning without proper access to that area.
Yeah, Ms. Barrett, it's, it's difficult.
The planning board.
I'll take a, I'll, I'll take a shot at that, George.
Be my guest.
Diane, Ms. Kenny, I have all the same concerns that you just outlined. However, I, I have decided I will reserve those concerns and those questions until I see a project put in front of me. This is just, we hear it all the time and I, I, and I get it. This is a zoning article. This isn't a traffic article. This isn't a infrastructure bill. This is a zoning article. I don't know what's going to go in there, if anything, and until I do, I don't know how much traffic there will be. I don't know what the project would have for access to it. It is a large area and you're certainly not going to go to this whole area just off of Glen Charlie Road. There's other ways into there. So I guess the point is, is that I think we as a community have to understand our concerns for a zoning bylaw. And Charlie brings them up and Charlie talks specifically to zoning issues. And then we need to talk about special permits for special, for specific projects. And we need to save our concerns for the appropriate forum. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. Ms. Kenny, great, great questions. So if, you know, basically there's a bylaw change, now someone can actually come forward and say, this is the proposal, this is phase one, these are the elements, et cetera. So all of your questions are spot-on excellent. But without, without having zoning in place, et cetera, it's, they wind up being premature and, and I understand it's, it's, it's interesting because what we're doing is, you know, you have to go through the, the steps to, to make the process happen before you can get to those, those next levels. And what the chairman, what Mr. Swenson said are, are spot-on. At some point, there'll actually be, hopefully, you know, a, a master plan that says, this is a proposed use. And then those, you know, how do you get there? How do you get away from there? What are the uses? What are the demands, et cetera? Good questions. It's just that right now, it's, it's not the forum. But you know, if this does pass, you know, I'm sure every, every one of the questions that you're asking now, I mean, I write everything down. And these are going to be, you know, that's the template for, here's our proposal. What do we have to answer? And, and these are the questions. So I don't, I don't want you to think, oh, you know, Tocchio was on there and he wasn't hearing me. I'm hearing you. It's just that, you know, hopefully those are all things that I have to cross those, you know, those hurdles in the future, once I know that something like, you know, like this type of zoning can be passed to allow some of these more sophisticated uses.
So we'll have to agree to disagree because I believe this is the exact forum when we're talking about access to the whole entire area that you want to change the zoning for. So I believe that we should never vote on this without knowing exactly how access will be handled for any project. It's right now 100% residential and the traffic already is terrible. And I, it's cart before horse. So we'll have to agree to disagree. I would like to know personally where the access would be because I live in the area. And I would like to know if two or three years from now, will a project get approval and now I'll have traffic noise, additional traffic noise in my backyard. So it's selfish, but I think there are already also a lot of other people who are in the same position as me, that an interchange could change their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think this is probably a good time to adjourn for this evening. As stated earlier, we're looking at beginning this again next Monday. And in the meantime, you can review documents that are online and provide comment at that point. I would just remind you that, again, we're not looking at a specific project. We're looking at a framework within which a project could be presented to us. We have a lot of the same concerns you do, surprisingly enough. You know, we, we can all read and we, we've lived here and we, we have our expectations. And I think putting our heads together, we can come up with a good project for everybody.
I agree. I'd like to thank everyone this evening. Conversation, excellent questions, concerns, all very helpful. And I appreciate, I just appreciate the discourse and your time.
And with that, I would look a motion, for a motion from the board to continue this public hearing to December 7th at 6 o'clock. Don't all jump at once.
Go moved.
Russell, you're muted, so. Was that a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Richard?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
I think.
Motion to adjourn, George?
Take that.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye, aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.